Thank you, Your Honor. To the City Manager, this is the first time you've brought this to the governing body, and I certainly support our discussion about this. I'm certainly supportive of continuing to work on this, so to say something to the voters. I approve of the three categories: quality of life, ecodevo, infrastructure. I was pleased to see that the zoo got such high marks in terms of quality of life, but also very pleased that bikeways and trails got relatively high marks. I'm always amazed at the number of citizens that utilize our bike trails and our bike paths and walking trails and whatnot throughout the city, and I'd certainly like to see that expanded. It's relatively inexpensive, and it provides a lot of enjoyment for a lot of folks. I'd still like to see some sort of a pedestrian traffic or bike path or walking path on top of the levee going east to west along the Kansas River. I think that would be the first step in allowing people to see the river for the first time, instead of simply being a body of water across which we take the bridge, take your bike ride up and down the levee. We could have 5K races along, and we could do a lot by having a bike path or some sort of a walking path along the levee. So I would certainly like to see us continue working on that as part of this package. I have a question for Mr. Whitaker.
Mr. Whitaker, please come forward.
A couple of council members have brought up, we already have certain projects that have been identified as being, have sent sales tax, citywide projects, and that can only be used for existing streets, existing sidewalks and whatnot. And the potential city projects that have been identified, how do we, or how does Public Works intend to coordinate those projects that we're proceeding on with the citywide half-cent sales tax and coordinate that with a potential countywide sales tax so that we have a coordination? I guess my concern is to make sure that if we pursue this, we have a coordinated plan to address streets, curbs, gutters and sidewalks throughout the city. And have you had a chance to kind of think that through, how, if this proceeds, how we're going to coordinate those, the various buckets for which these Public Works projects can be funded?
Well, I think, and I don't know as I've thought it through a lot, but let me, you know, what I could at this point say is obviously if this was brought up for vote, which I'm, you know, hearing would be possibly the August timeframe, obviously we've kind of come up with a list of what our projects we would want, you know, in the county half-cent sales tax. But would be, we were looking at, in this case, let me back up a little bit, on the half-cent county, again to address what the deputy mayor was mentioning, we can spell out, at least what I understand before, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we can spell out what would go into the project. So in this case, on the county, my understanding is if we wanted to take a road, put new curbs and gutters on, new sidewalks and all that, we could do that with the, you know, identified in this project, you know, with the county half-cent sales tax. The city cent, city half-cent sales tax spells out that we can't add curbs, gutters and sidewalks, as you said. So we would have that opportunity on these projects. The other would be, is to make sure that, yes, we do coordinate them together so that we're not coming in and tearing things up to come back in, you know, from that standpoint. We even looked at, as we put these budgets together, could we also include some utility money? When I say utility money, utilities within the project cost, so that we could, you know, reduce the utilities that are under this particular project and include those as part of that also, which again, we can't do in the city cent, half-cent sales tax. So that part, we probably have thought through, and then we'd have to know, once we knew what our project list was, and again, that would be based on what you all, you know, would decide, you know, as far as projects, and then would tie them in together with our, you know, our ongoing CIP process and also the city half-cent sales tax projects that we have.
Any follow-up, Your Honor? This list, was this developed as a result of the town hall meeting you had, or was this a staff-driven? I mean, it's a good list, I'm not criticizing the list, I think it's a great starting point. But did this, what was the genesis of this, of this list?
Part of it was from the town hall meeting. We pulled in some of those projects, and then also looking at what are our, you know, we took a look at our major routes that would be central to the city, that, I mean, all citizens would benefit from, you know, was probably a key as we came into this and looked at that, and, you know, I would say that was our major reason there. Again, let me point out, this list of projects, again, we don't know whether it's a 15-year tax, a 20-year tax, or a 10-year tax, this will, you know, this whole, you know, depending on the term of the tax, we would have to whittle this list of projects down. It's not like we can do all of this. This is probably based more on the 20-year tax since it was on the table we came up with, and actually I think that we may have to whittle that down a little bit, again, depending on what's available, what goes on with the, you know, the other aspects of the taxes, how much goes to the other projects, or, you know, quality of life and like that, would then limit how much we would have in the infrastructure bucket for the streets and like that.
And I have a follow-up question just along that line, because on our, on our list from the meeting, the second one is Southwest 10th Avenue, Fair Lawn to Wanamaker. Now, that's not on our city projects, but then is it on, in the CIP? I know I think there's been support of that.
There were a couple of the projects, as we looked through that list, that since this really wouldn't start until '17, we felt, you know, we held those out as either would be through the CIP process or other funding, knowing that maybe we needed to work on those projects prior to when this tax would come in.
Okay, understand. And then I would like to comment the other part, and Mr. Campos brought up, and that is the economic development, which is, I think, a very important component of this, not debating what the amount should be or whatever, but I think Topeka has certainly gained a great deal, you can always debate its effectiveness, but certainly it has been very helpful to our city in economic development, city-county economic development, what we have been able to provide with the sales tax that funds a part of the economic development aspect. Are there other questions for Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Schmidt?
Not for Mr. Whitaker.
All right, thank, all right, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, Mr. Whitaker. One of the projects that were, had been proposed to us tonight is Seward Avenue. Seward Avenue is currently in our 2014 CIP, and we're having a mill and overlay from Chester Golden all the way out to Rice Road, which encompasses half of what you've proposed. Why is that? Why is this on this list?
This list was, this one, that one item actually came through, I think, in the, when we had the town hall meeting, was one of them that they voted on, and I think it was that section that they would like to extend versus a mill and overlay in there. I'm not, you're more familiar with that area, but from, was it Sumner over? If I had them, if you look on the map, let's see. It's up there in that Chester, you know, where it's the intersection with Seward and Chester, where they wanted, we're stopping, if you know, west of there with the curb and gutter project, you know, the street scape and everything.
Curb and gutters, gotcha.
This would be that extra section that we could get the curb and gutters in.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Man Speaker, Mrs. Hill.
I think Mr. Schmidt was.
Mr. Schmidt. All three at once. Mr. Schmidt, go for it.
All right, I'll take it. I wasn't around for the first, while I was around, I wasn't on the council for the first countywide sales tax, and as I've learned, it contained, when we look at this survey with the quality of life, economic development, and then the road projects, the current countywide sales tax includes only economic development and road projects, if I'm remembering correctly from that, and...
I'd say Public Works and Bridges.
Correct, but not any quality of life issues. From the meetings that I was at, quality of life and equality of life also in the survey got more response than any other aspect. I think it's also important that we note, and I think this is a major problem that we've had with economic development in this city, is that economic development and quality of life are not two different things. And I imagine if you brought Mr. Dobler up here, or anybody who's been on the inner-city visits in the last 10 years, they would tell you that things like what Mr. Harmon described, parks, recreation, you know, levee, trails, those kinds of things, those are what attract, those are what attract new citizens and retain citizens that have options to go other places. And those are, those are important citizens to retain, those are the kind of people that drive economic development, and they come to places that have good zoos, that have, you know, a facility like the Expo Center that can bring in quality entertainment, that have good parks and recreation. So I think, I think we need to not, I love the addition of quality of life to that, I don't like the addition of quality of life to that as separate from economic development. I think those are two, two areas that could be combined, and I think, I think it would be, it would be a good idea to, to not only study the impact of those, those projects like, like trails on, on the levees, in a quality of life standpoint, but also in an economic development standpoint, before presenting this, you know, to voters. So, anyway, those were just my thoughts.
Now, and the City Manager mentioned it, and Mr. Schmidt has mentioned Mr. Dobler, and so I think it'd be appropriate to ask him to come forward to make some comments. Then we have...
He's running out the door.
I, not to put him on the spot or anything, but have this opportunity, and then I'll go back to Mr. Man Speaker and Mrs. Hiller, who have questions yet.
Thank you. Yeah, you know you're getting old when something that seems like it was two years ago was 10 years ago, 2004, when the, this was done the first time. I think this is a great discussion. You know, I'm here, you're laughing.
I'm laughing because everything he brings up is a great project, a great discussion. You remember that, Mr. Harmon?
No, yeah, I'm an optimist. It is great discussion. I think, you know, I'm here representing really the chamber and the private side. This whole process is kind of a three-legged stool, it's cooperation between the city and the county, but it also takes a little bit of the private sector to help educate the public on, on a good initiative that has support from both governing bodies, and that's really what, what we're here to provide. It's up to you folks to decide what goes on the ballot, and, you know, there's certainly folks out there that will support the educational part. So, quality of life is really important, I think, just taking a little liberty here. In 2002, '03, '04, when this was discussed the first time, you know, the primary goal was to get a bridge across the river on Topeka Boulevard, an extremely expensive project. That's been done, I mean, it was an infrastructure project in the heart of the city, and certainly, I think, replacing that with infrastructure projects in the heart of the city, be them streets or trails or other things, is very important. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Are there questions for Mr. Dobler?
If I could prod...
Yes, Mr. ...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Maybe if you could talk about what the plan is for getting this on the ballot, and timing, and what happens if you're successful, not successful, because it's obvious that we're, we want to continue to work this through and make sure that we're bringing a unified city position, which will engage, involve some engagement, so maybe you could comment...
And not to put you on the spot or anything.
No, that's fine. You know, I've been through this a couple of times with the 2004 sales tax, and again, helped a little bit with the 2009 citywide sales tax. So there is a timeframe that, you know, I think it's 90 days from getting the final action through the county to put the ballot, to send it over to the, to the County Elections Commission to actually get the ballot on. So it's about 90 days, so if you're looking at August and backtrack from that, it's, you know, there's, there's not a huge window right now. Obviously, another option would be the general election in November. I think the idea is to fashion something that gets support this time around, but if it doesn't, then you have another opportunity in 2016.
Other questions for Mr. Dobler? Mr. Campos?
Hello, Mr. Dobler.
How are you?
Forgive me if I catch you off-guard. I have a quick question. How would the private side feel about using some of this half-cent sales money for things needed for fire department or to help pay for police cars? Would that be something that the private sector would essentially entertain?
You know, I can't really speak for everybody that takes part in this endeavor. I think we rely on, on both governing bodies to come up with a supportable initiative, and then, and then we, we support it. And, you know, understanding that it's a whole mix of revenue out there from, from general fund to sales tax, and it's like everything in life, it's a balance of what goes where. So, I don't think we presume to tell you what ought to be on the ballot. Our goal is to support a, a good initiative that has a lot of support from both governing bodies.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions for Mr. Dobler? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here and speaking to us, Mr. Man Speaker, and then Mrs. Hiller.
I appreciate your comments about quality of life, and I always question when I say things like, "I go to the zoo all the time, I don't know that we need to make this kind of investment," because the reality of what I mean is that the zoo has lots of revenue channels, whereas a road project has a minimal amount of revenue channels. And so to look at quality of life and compare it with road projects or infrastructure projects, I think there's a little bit of a difference there. And, you know, I, Mr. Campos's idea of public safety, I think that's great, I don't know about cars, you know, with, for me, a tax like this, especially based on such a long period of time, makes sense for us to buy things that are bricks and mortar, that are buildings, so if it's, if it's updating and doing, you know, making our, our fire stations come into the 21st century in terms of the equipment and the building that they actually exist in, and they're not dealing with leaky roofs and all those types of things, I think that might be a great opportunity to spend some of these funds. But, you know, the last thing that I'll leave everybody with is, if you, if you plan this poorly, if we do a bad job, what ends up happening is that we build roads that we don't need. And folks don't really need to go too far in the city to find one. Last week, I was told to go check out this road, and so I drove out to the east side of town between 29th and 45th on Croco, and it was the middle of the day. I mean, I will, I will give it that. But you could have landed multiple airplanes on this five-lane, probably two and a half mile, from one not-that-busy street to another not-that-busy intersection, I mean, three lanes would have been sufficient. But the reality is, is that five lanes have been constructed. Those five lanes have to be maintained, they have to be cleared of snow, they have to be fixed. All of that costs more money and compounds the cost to us. I think that that massive piece of infrastructure would have been beautiful at 10th and Topeka, where we have all visitors coming and going from our Capitol Building, and we have horrible streets around that complex. There's lots of places that two and a half miles of five-lane road would have benefited us more. I would also just publicly encourage my colleagues across the street to remember that they represent the entirety of the county, not just the portion of the county that exists outside of the city. They are elected by 70% of the, or 70% of the citizens in Shawnee County are in the city of Topeka, the other 30% exist out in the county. So when you're figuring out how to spend money, I'm not really opposed to the county saying, "Hey, let's spend some more money in the city," because that's where our voters are also at, and not just spend all the money in the county on projects that only affect 30% of our populace. So, thank you.
Mrs. Hiller?
I'm excited to hear the comments around the table, because they're, I agree with them, all of them. I mean, city and county, get, get projects that are in the city this time, combine some quality of life things, which are fun and, and people are, get excited about, with some infrastructure things, some of which are, people are excited about, and some of which perhaps aren't very exciting at all, but they're very important. I'm real sensitive to the city-county line and that balance. I not only want to see money spent in the city, but also look at some things that we're paying for now, some things that are in our CIP plan, that really I have struggled for years now, looking at how much money we're spending out on the edges of town for possible development at some point, that are then on the ratepayers that we currently have. Everybody knows that I'm interested in seeing us become more debt-free, so I really do like those sales tax projects, and I'm real comfortable with looking into our, our CIP as it is now, and looking at projects that we could instead do for cash, that would be appealing as either city-county projects, or, you know, would fit into some of those buckets. I agree with the comment that's been made, at least by one colleague, I think more, rather than 10 or 20 years, particularly at this time of change, where we're sort of, we're re-looking, we've got a city manager that's been here a year, were we looking at our utility rate structure, at our capital improvement programs, and what's important at the city? The county is, has not had a CIP, they're doing a similar kind of look, they're master planning for parks and rec. The number that came to me really, I don't ever want to see us get so far out with specific named projects, that we are at the point we were this year, where we were questioning whether a project that was voted on was, was really the best expensive money right now, and some good examples have been made. My thought in pondering all of that was to, was maybe to recommend a seven-year program this time. That's a lot of years, but if we specify some projects, it gives us some time while we're doing all this retooling at the city and the county level to, to have a manageable lifespan, and I will reflect, some of us went to Oklahoma City, and I think Neil Dobler did too, and, you know, they, they did their half-cent sales tax project, some were pretty short and some were pretty long. They really looked at what they needed and what reasonable lifespans were for their projects, and so on. Now that we don't have that big boulevard bridge that is gonna, it was gonna take 12 years to pay off, we don't necessarily have to go that long. I played with a layout of, that kind of reflects the variety that I was hearing around the table. This is not set in stone for me, but I'll, I'll run through it to just kind of explain how I came up with it, as an example of how we might get out of the box, and, and recommend and mix it up, and eager to hear what Neil thinks of it, too. One is the bikeways, I've heard that come up again and again, and this is, this is ballpark numbers here, too, but we need about $5 million to finish the, the city's bikeways plan that we have just inaugurated. It's a ballpark number. A ballpark number of $10 million to put into the trail system, which is very popular and extensive, the levees, finish Soldier Creek, get down to Lake Shawnee, all that, let's say $10 million, let's say we wanted to invest $15 million. One reason I came up with that shorter term is we could complete our trail system in five or seven years, we don't need 20 years to do it. So with that at the head of the line, it was just a thought. We've been talking about wayfinding signs, we really need, need them in the city and the county, on the streets as well as on the trails, if we come up with that, a master plan, that is joint within the next year or so, and there's discussion of getting that done. Numbers that I've heard kicked around from the city staff, maybe we need $600,000, let's say, to get the whole wayfinding system involved. Just for fun, people have been talking about biking and, and a new sport, obviously a baseball diamond didn't work, a baseball stadium, but what if we put a velodrome in on the South River front, or some other appropriate place? Those, there aren't many around the country, there's a lot of interest in the cyclists on that, it could be a real draw for us, 1.9 million, let's say. Certainly, we want to do more streets, but if we put, let's say, $30 million in for streets, we've been doing a lot, we could, we could roll back a little bit on streets for the next round. If we did $30 million and we made sure that 70% of those street miles were in the city, and 30% were out in the county or shared, might be a way to look at it this time. We've got some big-ticket items in the CIP that I wouldn't mind moving over. The new fire station that we've proposed in northwest Topeka, $3.7 million. That's, that's serving people in the city, but it's also set for, for potential growth, that's why it's where it is. And it's just a thought, again, not set in stone. We've got a, a water tower that we need to put in way on the south end of town to serve the industrial, the economic development growth we've had and potential other growth, $4.5 million. We need, we've got also in our long-range CIP, a fire station on the south side of Topeka, that people feels very important, $4.3 million. And there's been a lot of talk about a major investment in the Expo Center, which we all share, and again, I know there are mixed feelings about that, but just for talking purposes, if we put $25 million into the Expo Center, that total is $85 million. It's a variety of investments. I think if what we're talking about is 17 million a year, $5 million of which would go, could go to economic development, and therefore 12 million for projects, that comes about, about even for a seven-year plan. And what I find interesting also about that is that those items that are on that list that would otherwise be in our CIP, if we took those out of our CIP and did them with cash, did not replace them, we could lower our CIP cap, at least for those seven years, from $9 million to four, to a $4 million cap, which by just some rough numbers of what we've done before, could save taxpayers in the city of Topeka $16 million in financing costs. That's a big deal to me, and I'd like to see us looking at this prospective new half-cent sales tax with that new kind of fresh lens. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Everhart?
I'll try to be brief. I think the bottom line, it's been a good discussion, but the bottom line is that the county is putting this proposal together, not the city council, while it's good for us to have some input. And it, it ultimately will be voted on by the people in the city and the county, but I mean all across Shawnee County, and so they'll decide what's going to be approved. And what I hear primarily is still about infrastructure, so I, I can understand why the county is looking at and why the city is talking about infrastructure projects, because that's, that's what a lot of, quality of life issues are important, but I think a lot of people, how this originated was, roads weren't being built, things weren't being taken care of under the mill levy process, so, you know, there was a, a need to go this route for our major infrastructure. So, I think it's been good discussion, but ultimately, you know, it's going to be what the county decides to put on the ballot and what people vote on. The other thing is, I have to remark on, on my colleague, while I don't want to debate whether Croco Road should have been three or five lanes, I don't know what time of day you were driving over there, because that's my side of town, and it is the only lake, and there's a lot of travel. And if you're over there in the summer, when all the ball teams are playing, I'm going to tell you, I hit that roundabout at 45th and Croco all the time, and I don't think I'm ever on that roundabout when I'm not sharing it with four or five cars. So, to suggest that there is no traffic on Croco Road, I'm going to hear about that, I know, because Quarian Acres is in my district, and they drive up and down Croco Road, and so I just had to comment that I think, I think it doesn't do us any good to, to look at things that are already done, that are benefiting certain parts of town, and suggest that it was unnecessary work. I think we have projects that need to be done all across the county, and of course, we need to focus on the city, but my people that live in the city use that road. That's, that's, you know, Quarian Acres is right there at Croco Road, so, so is a new housing development that's at 45th Street, right off of Croco Road, that's in my district. So, you know, those people drive that every day, so I don't want to make it sound like, you know, somehow these were not wisely thought out.
Okay. And not to rebut, but actually he had asked to speak earlier, Mr. Man Speaker.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm certain that if I lived off of Croco Road, I would love it, too. Unfortunately, I don't, and all of the neighbors that I live around don't, and so therefore they've got to deal with the roads that they have. And I, though I'm often criticized for focusing on my district, I'm actually, because of representative democracy, only responsible to represent those individuals that elected me. And so therefore, when I bring these discussions about the fringe of the, of the city having excellent roads while the core of the city dwindles, it's not because it's, I'm jealous of what they got, it's a, I think we need to be cognizant of how we plan and move forward to make sure that all parties in the city are receiving equitable services, and not certain parts of the city are receiving different services. are receiving different services. I think we throw that around a lot, and it depends on whose political football it is that week, that we can say east side versus west side, or north versus south, or county versus city. We all are in the same boat, I realize that, the problem is that I think at some point in the last twenty or thirty years, the folks in District Six got forgotten they were in the boat, because that's where, from my perspective, things have been left behind. So I'm learning a lesson, that if things are said out loud at council meetings directed at staff, that sometimes they become etched in stone in terms of the position of the council, and so I just wanted to provide a little clarity as to how I felt about Councilwoman Hiller's propositions. Bikeways is a thing that I find important, I think is important, but nine times out of ten, it seems like it's incorporated in the projects that we already have planned, so to set aside separate money just specifically for bikeways, I think we are, we are walking on the edge of the citizens of Topeka being okay spending the money we spend on bikes. I know there's a community of individuals who are very passionate about that, about biking, and are very passionate about sharing the roads with them, I'm friends with lots of people in that community, I bike myself, but the reality is, is that there's got to be a very fine balance of how much we spend, I mean, if you put cars versus bikes, the city of Topeka, a lot more people drive, it's just realistic. So focusing on our, focusing our efforts on streets, infrastructure, curbs, gutters, is my priority. Trails sound like parks, and parks are not our responsibility, so I would put that back onto the county and not move forward with that at all. I wish wayfinding signs would find a way to disappear from this body, because I'm done having that conversation, and a velodrome, well, I just tweeted that I would be more apt to be interested in a terror dome, or a thunder dome, if you're interested, but not a velodrome. I don't know anyone in the city of Topeka who rides a track bike. There's some fixed gears out there that people are riding, but track bikes, not so much. So that's just kind of where I'm at, I think I've been clear about the concerns I have, the direction I want to see us move forward. I think the key to this is planning, and doing this not in a way to rush to be successful, but making sure that we're making the best possible decisions to impact this community for the next twenty or thirty years. I mean, that's what keeps me up at night, is thinking about the fact that something I do today has a twenty- or thirty-year impact, and I want to make sure that it's the best possible thing. So I would just have everybody keep that in mind if they could, as we move forward through this process. I hope we can find a sales tax that's worthy of unanimous support from this body, I don't know that we'll get there, but if we can get close, it'll be a miracle. Thank you.
Well, I just want to comment, as the only elected person from the entire city, perhaps I have more opportunity to see things at the twenty-thousand-foot level, and I think on something like this, we really have to look at it from the total city and county's perspective. We have to take care, of course, and I can, I know of the bad streets in every one of our nine districts that should be repaired this year, and it's, it's all the districts, you know, you look at the map, you see the projected projects on there, and, you know, and we could spend, as we really started tonight, hours, days, which should be the highest priority. At some point, we have to make a decision. Economic development, I know, was one of the keys that we started with this ten years ago, is we felt, the city felt that, the county, the leaders of the community felt that we were losing, we were behind in economic development, and this was a way to provide some funds that we could do things that we needed to do in order to have new companies come to Topeka, or to help those who are here so they remain in Topeka. So that's another very key project. And then the quality of life issues, and again, that's really tough, to be able to get our nine plus those three to agree what are the quality of life issues. So there's really going to have to be compromising, and we're going to have to agree to it if we're going to have this continued, be able to work it out. It'll be challenging, but I acknowledge the city manager in starting the process, you know, I think we've had good comments, good opportunities to vet tonight, to say some things, and the process, you know, it's making sausage, it's going to be difficult, but we hope we can come up with something. Mr. Schwartz, and then Mr. Shad.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. One of the things that I think that the citizens really want is more citizen input, I've gotten that so many times, and when I look at five hundred and forty-four responses on this countywide sales tax survey, I think out of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand citizens in Topeka, that's really a very low response. So, and I'm on the internet and our website often, and I would hope to see that if we do something to improve Topeka, one of it's going to be, is to spend some money on communication, and getting citizen involvement and citizen input. I'm not sure if you can say, out of five hundred and forty-four responses in Topeka, that these charts are representative of the citizens, and so I would really hope that communication is one of our efforts to get what do the voters want, so, thank you.
Brett.
Yeah, there were several mentions about the nature of this tax, and the fact that this tax targets poor people. It disproportionately targets people who live paycheck to paycheck, and who are spending that on things that are subject to sales tax. It's a regressive tax, and it's a regressive tax by nature. If you look at this list, a lot of this is, not that any of these things aren't needed, but this is fairly basic infrastructure. This isn't a new Topeka Boulevard Bridge, we're not building a subway system, or something like that. This is fairly basic expenditure, and we're paying for that with sales tax, the most regressive tax that we use. My point when I was focusing earlier on the quality of life and economic development combination of events, is that those are things that affect everybody. Those are the kinds of things that you have special taxes for. You have special taxes for a new bridge that's necessary, or you have special taxes for economic development that's necessary, whether it's trails, or the zoo, or this, you know, Gage Park, or something like that, everybody gets those, those are free things. Putting new curbs in, or, you know, overlaying a street is one area of town, it's a very specific, isolated area of town, and you're asking the most regressive form of taxation to pay for that. So I think, I think it's important to realize that if we're going to go in a direction where we're basically financing basic infrastructure maintenance with the most regressive form of taxation that we use, that might be something that we want to look at a little bit differently, and maybe that isn't what this tax should be primarily used for. Thank you.
We have one person who signed up for discussion on this issue, Joseph Ledbetter, if you would come forward, please.
I took a lot of notes here, and had my prepared comments as well. I'm certainly opposed to a Rip Van Winkle tax of twenty years. As far as economic development goes, I have some specific comments I'm going to make, and I'm going to actually pass out some exhibits of the falling jobs in this community that have not been helped by the current program. But we had a town meeting, and I specifically remember Ms. Schwartz saying, that was a good town meeting, we should have had more, so why didn't we? You want public input, that was a good way to have it. Why didn't we have more? Why the rush on a tax that's not going to elapse for two and a half years? That's the big question that has to be asked. Who's rushing this thing? Who's pushing it? How are they benefiting? Why can't this wait till the general? You, tonight, just raised all kinds of questions, most of you, about you've got concerns, it hasn't been talked out. In other words, vet it. How about we vet these things, and actually have a real discussion, and involve the public, not just a group of quote-unquote business leaders, but how about you involve the small business people, and a lot of them don't belong to the chamber, probably about seven thousand of them don't, including me, although I have belonged in the past. You know, it's not just one little group that gets to say where all the money in this town goes. But a general election makes a lot more sense, you're going to have a lot more involvement, and you've got a lot more time to plan for this, and if it's ninety days out from the general, it's still, you're going to have this thing done by September, it's plenty of time to talk about this. Now, I want to say, I actually went over to the Expo, which isn't that far from my office, I went on a tour a few weeks ago, I said, okay, I've been critical, I want to see what I'm talking about, if there's anything I need to adjust. And they do have some HBAC problems, they do have a roof problem, I'm not saying they need twenty-five million, I'm not saying they need forty million, but there are some problems with that, and that facility is used by a lot of people in this community. Social services, what's wrong with involving some social services since you're taking it in the most regressive form from the poor, and from the middle class? Quality of life, that rings real well with me, I'd much rather give it to quality of life than GoToPika right now, with their abysmal program, and their lack of progress, and their ridiculous salaries. I'd much rather give it to people like that. You know, if you want to put in some more bike trails, that's fine, as long as it's not on Wittenberg Road, because I will defend my clients, but, you know, I'm okay with that, I ride a mountain bike, I ride these trails, I enjoy them, I even go out to Forbesville, which doesn't have trails, but it's mostly empty, so it's a good place to ride a bike, too. We should have more town meetings on this, we should have more public input, and we do not need a twenty-year tax. In fact, I actually, the seven-year, I'm not in agreement with this, but it's not bad, you know, it's not bad, it's almost biblical, there's a seven-year program about redeem the debts, but, back in the Old Testament. But the failure of, in my opinion, of the last sales tax that we had was, economic development was too ambiguous, it was not thought through, it was not spelled out what we're actually going to do, there was no public input into that organization, they were blocked from the meetings, and you couldn't even speak at a Jado meeting till three years ago, when I pushed it. I'm going to ask for an extension of the time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Move to extend Mr. Ledbetter's time for five minutes.
It's been moved to extend his time for five minutes, is there a second? Mr. Harmon, seconds, all those in favor, vote yes, opposed, vote no.
Thank you very much.
Nine, yes.
Nine, having voted yes, please continue.
Thank you. Again, you need some more town meetings, and you need to put this on, if you're going to do it, in November, sixty percent of the money by the state would be divided with the city if you just did it across the board. So you need a good number of projects in the city, and that could probably include the zoo, I like the zoo, I think they need some things out there. If we're going to do it, let's do it where it benefits the most people. What about these levees that have not been fixed? You know, did you think about that? Think you need about sixteen million more for that? Did you ever think about just getting it done? Didn't we potentially lose a major employer because we didn't have, they got put in a flood zone? That's one of the rumors. How about the east side get California finally widened at least four lanes? And I know that part of that's in the CIP, but I'm going to have this discussion with Public Works at the next Highcrest meeting, we want to know when it's going to be done. What about an opening on the turnpike that would actually create economic development on California, and put business and dollars into Twenty-Ninth and California? Why can't that be funded? What about affordable housing? Isn't that economic development? I used to be involved in that a lot, I think it's economic development, why can't you have a piece of this go towards that? We certainly have enough poor in this town to qualify for a need for affordable housing. I think there's a lot of ideas that are still on the table that haven't been discussed, and that, in fact, has been one of my biggest problems with economic development over the last few years, is that the public is not invited, the public is not involved. Now, I'm going to pass these out, if you want to see if this sales tax worked with economic development, I challenge you to look at these statistics realistically, and tell me that our jobs have not declined in the city of Topeka over the last ten, twelve years. I'd like to pass that out to every council member, and the manager, and the mayor. Second table does the same thing, now that one talks a lot about the private sector, this one has all the jobs, you still see the same declines, thousands and thousands of jobs have been lost in this community over the last ten and twelve years. In fact, the one you're looking at, at the last election in two thousand and four, I vividly remember their commercials, they said they had created five thousand new jobs. They said GoToPika done that. If you look carefully at those statistics, the job loss was four thousand, a net loss. So the next handout talks about more job losses, talks about all categories, and then the last one I'm going to give you, if you'll be so kind to look at it, if not now, later, this is an article out of CJ, CJ Online, that talks about how Shawnee County has just grown in poverty, and now we're ninety-eighth, and in this survey, ninety-eight is a high number that you don't want. We're really low among the counties, which is one hundred and five in this county, in this state. So I'm going to pass this out. Since two thousand and eight, we've only had one new plant brought into this community, and yet we lost at least three major private employers, Hallmark's, Johnston's, and now this latest one, the insurance company. We're not keeping up. A hundred and eighty jobs does not make up for a loss of twelve to thirteen hundred jobs, and that's just private sector jobs that are big-ticket. There's a lot of other jobs that we've lost. I don't think small business is well-served by the current economic model. But I don't want to bore you, I've taken up plenty of your time, I would just ask you to carefully consider what's being said tonight, and not rush into this, and give it lots of time, not just a little time, don't feel rushed, don't be pressured by the county, and say, look, if you want our cooperation to get this thing passed, you need to cooperate with us. We need more time, we want to talk about this, and really, they should have that same discussion. And, you know, if we put it together right, maybe more of us will support it, and we actually might accomplish the things that we claim we want to accomplish, which is true economic development, and quality of life, and infrastructure. I want to thank you for your time, you've been patient. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of wrapping this up, and I certainly don't want to rush you all, but if, I would recommend that you all provide redirection to engage the county and the privates in specific discussion pertaining to these points, then come back in another meeting, based on the results of that meeting, and have more clarity, as opposed to where we're at today.
All right, that sounds like a reasonable request, council members. So provide your thoughts, input to the city manager, and on these areas. Any final comments we want to make, Ms. Hiller?
Well, just a little clarity on that request, and our response to that, I know that some of the discussion we had up front was, if we were going to do more public input, what should that venue be, and who should be up front listening and hearing, and I do think that there's great value, particularly with this issue, of those of us who, I mean, we're all in this together, we, as elected officials, aren't making this call, we need to hear from our constituents, from our districts, but all over, because we've got to come up with a proposal that the voters are going to pass, and so having, you know, perhaps the mayor, and the head of the county commission at, as the lead host for this, and have us all there, either inviting people to one of our council meetings, and the county, but I do think we need to be there, rather than having, just asking staff to do it for us. And I'm not sure what I heard, but I think we need to be there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Man speaker.
Just because this is a theme with me, I don't feel like I need to be there. Is that clear? Okay, thank you.
Hearing no further comments, we will move on to the next item on the agenda under new business. See? We will move on to the next item on the agenda under New Business, C, Applications, and I believe we have one.
We have one retail serial monk beverage license for the Walmart superstore at, or I'm sorry, the superstore at 2121 Southwest Wanmaker Road. And the staff is asking for approval.
Okay, is there discussion? Mrs. Ortiz moves to approve. Mr. Campos, seconds. Discussion, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have 10, yes.
Ten having voted yes, the application is approved. Proceeding down to the presentations, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items, I think most people probably recognize me if they haven't met him yet, but sitting to my right is Brandon Kaufman, who is the city's fairly new. This is the beginning of his-
Fourth week.
Fourth week. So he's pretty much a seasoned veteran by now. Brandon serves as the Controller and the Chief Fiscal Officer for the city, and he's just hit the ground running and working very hard. I also wanted to congratulate Chief Miller, who I think everybody saw in the paper, has been nominated by President Obama as the U.S. Marshal for Kansas. We've had several conversations pertaining to transition, and he's been a great partner to work with and has served the city extremely well. And we're not getting rid of him that quick, because there's still a confirmation process with the Senate that he needs to go through, but he's gonna work very closely in helping the process for selecting the new police chief, and we expect that he'll be around certainly till midsummer. But we're both committed to working with each other's schedules to make sure that he transitions out and has a very successful transition, and that we're able to identify the best possible police chief going forward. But thank you, Chief, for your friendship and for your leadership in this organization.
And that's it? That concludes, okay. Thank you. Fine. And I also, it's indeed an honor to be, to receive any presidential nomination, and it's an honor to the person certainly, but also to our city and to the Police Department. With your packet of information tonight, I included a, it says at the top, Resolution Number 14-088. This is action taken by the city of Wichita pertaining to the municipal elections. As you know, this has been moving through the legislature. There are various persons involved who feel that probably some form of this will pass within the next three weeks. Looks like perhaps the elections could be moved to the fall. There is still the possibility we could have partisan elections. Many city councils have taken action through such a resolution, or certainly have encouraged their members to contact legislators. The League of Municipalities, the League of Counties have both been very active, as well as the School Board Association. With, first of all, the general feeling is that elections at the local level are best determined by people at the local level, rather than a state determining one system for all. So it's a, I think there's a very strong feeling. I personally have taken the action as my, for myself in opposing or letting legislators know that I do not think this is a direction that is, that best serves the city of Topeka and the form of government that we have. With that, Mrs. Del Eastland. Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, you got, I'm in the running. I won a Presidential Fitness Award back in elementary school, so, kind of the same thing, pretty much. But we're, seriously, congratulations, that's a huge deal, and a testament to the hard work that you've done. You know, I, I'm fine admitting I sent a text message to the City Manager talking about your promotion, and I said that the things, in my short time on the council, the loads that I've watched you carry with little to no effort, with little to no expression of your own emotions, top-notch professional. I mean, they're bar none. We've been very, very fortunate to have you as a part of our team. I think at this point, you may be one of our oldest management employees, so you've weathered the storm longest. So I appreciate that, and thank you very much, just to echo the City Manager's concerns. I have a quick question for the City Attorney. In the charter ordinance, when council interacts with staff, that's spelled out under our council rules or under our charter ordinance?
It's under the charter ordinance.
And the language in the charter ordinance specifically says that any requests that a council member has for staff needs to go through the City Manager's office?
Yes, outside of what's termed day-to-day questions, need to go through the City Manager. And actually, I've prepared a memorandum on this issue that I was going to circulate to all council members to clarify some of the questions.
Okay, 'cause the concern I have is this. I make every effort to inform myself as best I can to the issues before the body, things that we need to change in our community, ideas. You know, I try to be as involved and informed as possible, but I also try to be extremely cognizant of the cost of operating a city, because I have to pass a budget year to year. And my concern is that when council members go around the City Manager directly to staff and monopolize time, that's not for free. There is a cost associated. And, you know, one of the ideas that I had, and I don't think the technology exists to do this, but in a lot of worlds, you have billable hours. And to a degree, I'd like to see the city, anytime a city staff member interacts with a city council member, that they mark down those billable hours and send the bill over to the City Council Department. Because I think it's important for everyone on this body to understand the impact of their interactions. So the, it's great to be informed, and I appreciate people wanting to have a firm grasp of knowledge, but there's nothing in the charter ordinance that says you can't inform yourself. It just says that there's a process. And I would just appreciate, in terms of how we can spend our dollars as wisely as possible in the city of Topeka, that we appreciate that process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Schwartz?
I think I'm more confused now than ever, but anyway. Because this afternoon, I spent three, four hours with Jim Green, and I was gonna comment on how wonderful a job he did in doing CPR classes for city staff. And I now know how to use an AED, which I did not know before this afternoon. So Chief Bailey's not here, but he did an outstanding job in teaching CPR, and I hope that continues. And I don't know if all of you are accredited and can have a two-year card to carry around about doing CPR, but I do encourage you to do that. The other thing I wanted to comment on was Nextdoor. I sent out one email, and we already have about 20 people in our neighborhood just in a couple days. And I sent out an email then to the leads from other neighborhoods. And this is gonna be a really wonderful tool about finding things going on in other neighborhoods or finding information out. So I'm gonna have, hopefully, ask Jan with Noelwood, who has 223 users on Nextdoor, to come and show us and the other neighborhood leads on how to get it going, because it is an excellent tool. So I thank the city for putting that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the chief also. It's been a pleasure working with you. It hasn't been that long that I've been on the council, but I've enjoyed it. So thank you and congratulations. I also wanted to say that happy belated St. Patrick's, happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. I hope everybody got out to the St. Patrick's Day parade this weekend. Hopefully, there were no pictures taken. But I thought that was a great, a great time. It was great to see the community come together like that. We had thousands of people out there. It showed us what a vibrant, fun downtown can be. And it showed us how it's not really that difficult to get something like that going, maybe not to that scale, but similar activities going down there regularly and really improve the life and the spirit of this city. So I wanted to thank all of the people responsible for putting that together, for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Harmon? Mrs. Hiller?
Kudos as well, Chief Miller. Awesome. St. Patrick's was wonderful. One of the things that you see there, even in the roped-off sections on 8th Street, is literally adults of all ages, and the kids, and the stroller, and the dog. I mean, everybody in town was downtown having a good time. So it's really a great event. Along those lines, I have, I've been asked to issue an invitation. Some of the members of the Bike Ways Advisory Committee are going to Oklahoma City on the 30th of March, and would be glad to have council members come along as well. They, Oklahoma City is implementing an event called Seek La Via, or otherwise Open Streets, that there's been a lot of interest in here. And that's where you simply close off streets on a regular, on a periodic or regular basis, and have all kinds of activities in the streets. So they're gonna go down and see it firsthand, just to bring it back. There are thoughts, and a committee forming to inaugurate that event here this fall. So more information, let me know. I'll refer you to Andy Frye from Bike Ways Advisory. Last, Mayor, in terms of your sharing this legislation, I really appreciate that. Is there something you think we should do additionally besides the lobbying that we're doing? If I can ask that across the table, because we need to do it right now, if we should.
I'll respond at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also'd like to congratulate the chief. It's very awesome. Anything that my boy Barack vets is good with me. So that, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Ortiz?
His boy. Brandon, it's kind of different sitting up here, isn't it? You, I've seen you kind of move forward and back and over, and, you know. You're safe, you're okay. I told the chief I was not gonna congratulate him, and he said, "Coming from me, that's a compliment." So I was like, "Okay." We have this kind of weird partnership. We've been up, we've been down, but at the end of the day, we both appreciate crime and appreciate each other for what we do. And hopefully, he won't be able to pass a background check, and he won't get the job. But we'll see what happens. Love you, chief. And thanks for all that you've done and all the knowledge that you've brought to the table. I'd like to say that there's a Public Health and Safety meeting at 12 o'clock on Monday, and I do believe it's, it's going to be- ECR? ECR? Okay, okay, okay. On the third floor? Okay, I wasn't real sure, 'cause I thought, "Well, I'm sure the judge has court in here." So just wanted to remind everybody about that. We wanted to talk about the five miles speed limit. I think that was some of the discussion. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. Everhart.
Yeah, I think the most important thing on this issue is to, for the legislators to hear from this, from us, or the public, that generally, the issue is that there's such a low election turnout in the spring. Studies have shown if it's moved to the fall, it doesn't automatically, there is no, not much of an increase in the number of people who vote if it's in the odd-numbered years. But I think a big issue is, it's that the state is determining one size fits all. And there's no acknowledgement in there of terms, are we all up at the same time? The reviser statutes has almost indicated, this is almost impossible to write legislation to cover all types of the municipality. So it's there somewhere in that process. But I also want to welcome Mr. Kaufman. Glad to have you here. We have two people who signed up for public comment. First is Joseph Ledbetter. I believe I saw him leave. The second is Frank Hoag.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been a long night, hasn't it? I just want to thank Mr. Campos on what was, on his article in the paper, that you went way out of your way to get that trash taken care of in that yard. You know, that's the kind of thing that we're after, is thinking different ideas on how that can be done. Can you tell me, did you get, did you get people from the neighborhood?
Mr. Hoag, here in public comment, you can make comments to the council. We do not have back-and-forth answers and questions.
Okay. I assume that, I'll do it this way, I assume that you've talked to the neighbors. That's exactly the way that it should have been done. That really fits in with what we've been asking for, and that's a Neighborhood Service Director. We need somebody that is on full-time within the department, in the city, that can make those kind of decisions out of the box like you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. It is appreciated. I understand that we are to have, go into an executive session. Mr. Sabat, would you want to state the parameters for that for us?
Yes, I would just ask for a motion to go to, into executive session to discuss employer-employee negotiations, to include the governing body, the City Manager, myself, Carol Foreman, and Jackie Russell for approximately 30 minutes. And Brandon Kaufman, and Nicky Lee.
All right. You heard the proposed motion, is there, is there such a motion? Mrs. Everhart moves, Mrs. Hiller seconds.
I suggest we have a five-minute break first.
Okay, we can, but will we have a second?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Nine, yes.
Nine having voted yes. We will go into executive session after a short break. And as I understand it, there will be no action after this, so people can leave as well as the city clerk, and we will take care of the minutes that are needed. We are in recess for, let's start as quickly as we can, five minutes.